Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting of Monday, March 2nd, 2020. This is a meeting which was rescheduled from February 24th, 2020. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Mister Flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
All members present. Considering except the Town Council minutes of Monday, February 10th, 2020, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any errors, corrections, or remissions? Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Through you, on the third page in the first full paragraph, going down to the fourth sentence, no, third sentence where it ends, we see counselor at the end. It just says Counselor Manna said they haven't brought much business to town over the last few years, but this project could potentially bring millions of dollars over the next several years. What I actually said was, I stated, "We've driven out a business that brought in three, four million dollars to the town and haven't brought much business in." So if you could correct that. And I also stated that the marijuana industry isn't the golden ticket most thought it would be.
Okay. Any further corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor has amended? Opposed? Abstain? Counselor Nash abstains from them. Subcommittee reports. General Government Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. We have not had a meeting recently and don't have one scheduled.
Thank you. Department of Public Works Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Meeting of the DPW Subcommittee was held on February 3rd, and a second meeting was held tonight. No action items on tonight's agenda. Another meeting is to be scheduled for next week or the following TBD. We will have meeting materials set aside so that they'll either be in this week's packet or the following's. Thank you.
Thank you. Education and Human Services Counselor Lazo.
I have no report at this time. Our next meeting is Monday, the 9th, at 6:00.
Thank you. Planning Development Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, through you. We had a meeting on 27th February. None of the agenda items from that meeting are on this agenda this evening. It'll be on the 9th. I do not have one scheduled, but possibly have one in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Protection of Persons and Property Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, through you. We did have a meeting last week. I can't remember the date. I'm sorry. And we discussed two of the agenda items that are on tonight's agenda, number 10 and number 11. And both of those were unanimous to be brought up here to Town Council. There was a lot of good discussion on the SAFER grant. I do not have the minutes in front of me. Mary did do them, and we're just getting, I haven't had another meeting to approve them or anything, so I don't have those in front of me. But there was a lot of good discussion for the SAFER grant, and that was unanimous to bring up here to Town Council. And the Chief and the Deputy Chief for the Fire Department are here to speak on those items, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any meetings scheduled or no?
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Chairman's announcements, just a couple of things. First off, I just want to announce there's a Fire Station Building Committee meeting this Wednesday, March 4th, at 6:00 PM here in the Town Hall. We'll have an update from the architect, as well as some conversations about fund mechanisms and next steps. Just want to announce to the council that on March 9th, the Superintendent Receiver, Jeffrey Villal, will be here, present to talk about the state of the schools and have a conversation. If there are any specific questions that councilors would like him to address, please send me an email no later than Wednesday so that I can get that question to him so he can be prepared to, hope to have a robust conversation. I know he's met with individual councilors to talk about the schools and has extended invitations to every councilor via email. I do get copied on those invitations, so I do know every council has been invited. So if you have any additional questions that you'd like him to cover, please get those to me. Had an opportunity to meet with Representative Durant today, talked about a few items, especially funding and the local funding that the Town of Southbridge did not receive this year, contrary to what our beliefs were. I've asked him to take a look at that and report back to us. He's also, along with Senator Fatman, has, they have also arranged, Senator Fatman's office has arranged a meeting, and we'll have more information sometime in June to have the Commissioner of Education present to meet with the Town Council. So I thank Senator Fatman's office for arranging that meeting, and we'll get the date specific for that for the council.
When is that again?
It'll be in June.
June?
Yep. That's all I have. Mister Town Manager.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I only have one item I want to briefly talk about. Friday about 3:00, I received a text message from Representative Durant asking me if we had any infrastructure projects for a binding bill and infrastructure projects for the state, and informed me that, you know, he had to put the, any amendment in within an hour and a half. So it didn't give me a heck of a lot of time to work on it. Obviously, I got on the phone with our DPW Director, myself and Heather had some conversation about various projects that might be feasible. There's been a project, again, this money is not guaranteed in any way. I want to be careful and let people know it, but a number of members of this council have been interested in Gulfwood Road and doing repairs up at Gulfwood Road. We, a number of us have met with citizens up there, and I know that the State Reps and State Senator had met with citizens on that particular road. And the project that what I put in with the representative was $500,000 for the repair and resurfacing of Gulfwood Road. Again, I don't know that will come through, but we felt that that was an important project, and there's a lot of residents' concerns about that. So we're attempting to address them through the state legislature, and I appreciate Representative Durant and Senator Fatman for working on this, and hopefully it'll come through. It'd be a tremendous benefit if that is the case. And again, I think, I can't think of a counselor who hasn't talked to me about that particular project, so I think it's, it is one of the more priority-type projects for the town.
Thank you. Presentations, we have no presentations this evening. Citizens Forum, is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address this Town Council on any item that's not on the agenda? Please come to the mic, identify yourself and your address. Please state your name and your address, please.
Good evening. Name, Scott Wharton, 311 Morris Street. So my property abuts the abandoned golf course that was Twin Oaks, Golden Oaks, I forget now. I have permission from the landowner to walk my dog back there and to use the land for just leisurely strolls and whatnot. As of late, as I've been going back there, I've noticed truck tire tracks and things like that. And then, most recently, I've found a whole bunch of syringes that were used back there. I did gather them up, I put them in this bag, and they had to be turned over to the authorities to dispose of properly. These were found 20 yards from my property line. So I guess I'm making the town aware of it. I'm asking for maybe extra patrols or something. I know that with this comes other things. People get desperate. My property's right there. I have two daughters, I have a family, and I just never want to be put in a situation where I have to protect them.
Okay. Mister Town Manager.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Just a few comments. See, police, believe it or not, have had to spend a great deal of time up there, particularly over the summer, because there was ATV issues up there and people doing all kinds of things up there that we didn't believe was good for the neighbors in the area, particularly noise, ATVs. Police put in a huge effort to get them out of there, and we worked with the, there's joint property owners on that property, been working with them to try to stop all of those activities. So the police are very interested in that particular piece of property for a lot of reasons. I will let them know about these issues as well. I frankly think that they probably do know about it already, but I would appreciate it to turn those into the Police Department, and they can get rid of those for you. And the best thing to do is to either shoot myself or the police chief an email letting them know as you see things up there so that we can deal with them. Obviously, we can't keep an officer up there all the time, but if the neighbors see something, hear something, please let us know as soon as possible so that we can react as quickly as possible to your concerns.
I will. I had put a trail cam out there, and I saw, you know, a silver pickup truck with a guy in it and whatnot at one point, and then I went back to check it, and it was gone.
Yeah, we hit them with some significant fines and everything else up there, so individual owners who are using ATVs and stuff, we hit them with significant fines, so we don't think they're going to come back, but we'll see.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
For, just, sir, another council may have a question, but the Fire Chief directly back there, if you give him the bag, the Fire Department will dispose of those for you, okay?
Yep.
Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, through you. I just have a question. Are they still, do you still see ATV activity up there to date?
Not lately. The ATV activity doesn't bother me as much. I mean, you know, I figure if that's how the landowner wants them to use the land, I didn't know he didn't want them to use the land that way. It wasn't my business. The noise doesn't bother me personally, but this did bother me, you know, so.
Okay. So Town Manager will follow up with the police chief in regards to your specific issue, and if you want to give those to the Fire Chief, he'll dispose of them properly.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming forward with that. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the audience that wishes to address the Town Council? Anyone else? Last call? Seeing none? Moving on. Vote to appoint Assistant Building Commissioner Michael Julian, representative of the Town of Southbridge Building Department, to the Fire Station Building Committee to replace former Assistant Building Commissioner Casey Burlingame. Is there motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Just speaking on, this is a procedural item. The Assistant Building Committee, well, the Building Department is a representative of the Fire Station Building Committee modeled after what we did with the school building. Since we had a change in that, the Director of Inspections, Andy Pelletier, asked that Mister Julian serve on that, so this is just procedural so that he can sit at the next meeting officially. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Opposed.
Unanimous, well, present. Item 10, vote to approve a transfer of $889 from salaries and wages account number 001220.51100 to other salaries account number 001220.51190 to cover the increase in hours for the administrative assistant line item. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mister Manager.
I think we've discussed this at length. As a result of our veteran agent or our Community Service Director leaving, we had to deal with a few hours for the injured on duty. We talked about this as just the cost of some administrative work.
Counselor Marquetti.
It would be nice if we could have a little bit more information about this. I notice that when we have councilors at the beginning, the Subcommittee Reports, they usually say, "Well, what we're going to talk about is on tonight's agenda," and then when we get to the agenda, nothing much is said about it, and some residents would like to know what exactly we're voting on. Just asking for some more information on it.
Counselor Manna, do you have anything?
Yes. Thank you, Mister Chairman, through you. This was discussed to give Stacy, I think, two extra hours a week, Mister Town Manager, and it's for the IOD. Mike Trombley is leaving. He used to do the IOD.
Injured on duty.
Yeah. I know what IOD is. The IOD, the paperwork. Okay, yes. And so he's going to be training, or he has been training Stacy on it, but Stacy's taken over that role. Yeah, I believe we have the information in our packet, and we had a lot of councilors at that meeting, too. Maybe two weren't there, so.
So, certainly, Counselor Marquetti, I appreciate your comment, because while everybody here on council may have vetted it thoroughly, your point is to get it out to the public and the citizens about what goes on at those meetings, so I appreciate that. We do have a memo. Is there anything else you want added to that, or is that adequate?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Just need to ask for a little clarification, because the account numbers don't match the memo versus what's on the agenda item. And I'll note that if you'd like to follow along on the agenda, I'll read the account number from the memo, 0011120 decimal 511000 for the first one, so it doesn't match. The second one is just missing a zero, which I don't think carries much consequence, but the first one doesn't match for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do apologize I didn't catch it before now, otherwise I would have asked for clarification.
No, I didn't. So, in any event, we'll make sure that the appropriate line item is adjusted.
You got it.
Yeah. Okay. Yep, so, correct, Counselor Daniel does say on the back is the transfer request that was signed by the, so the correct salary and wages account will be, just for the record, Mary? 0011120.511002, which is salary and wages, to number 001220.511900, okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, well, present. Item 11, vote to authorize the Fire Department to proceed to initiate, complete, and submit the SAFER grant application for the hiring of four additional firefighters. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Chief, could you, just for the record, the acronym SAFER, just for public knowledge and everybody's knowledge, what is SAFER?
Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response.
Okay, could you just put it as part of the record as that that's what it is? Thank you, I appreciate it. We'll turn this over. Mister Town Manager, do you have anything to say first?
No, I will wait until after the presentation for my comments. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Counselor Manna, do you want to introduce the topic first?
So, yes, so this is another item that we discussed at length in the PPP meeting, and this is a grant that over four years, I believe, is it four years or five years?
Three, three years of funding, we assume.
Three years, yes. Three years of funding for four firefighters. On the fourth year, we would fund on our own.
Correct.
And we discussed this at length, again, and we'll let the professionals on the grant discuss it more.
Yep. Chief, thank you for being here tonight, and the proposal that you have, just for councils that weren't here last year, sitting up here. This is a grant that we applied for last year unanimously by the council. I know council has changed, but it was unanimous to apply for that. Unfortunately, we did not get the funding, so this is the second, second year of trying to increase the staff. And so with that, Chief?
All right. Good evening, Mister Chairman. Thank you, Mister Manager, councilors, and citizens. So again, it's coming around grant time with the federal government there. Fiscal year falls a little bit behind, and they changed the, the way the grants are submitted this year, different program, so it came out later this year. The AFG, which we put in, is going to be closing in a couple of weeks, and the SAFER grant usually comes out about a month after the AFG. Last year, it was a decision to support kind of at the last minute, and we wanted to get ahead of it this year and make sure that we had your support before it opened. So I'm going to give a little background on the department and kind of a look over my, the span of my career. So we'll go with these. So your department right now, there are four shifts, working a rotating schedule. Obviously, we cover 24/7, 365. Each shift is funded with six personnel who are firefighters and EMTs or paramedics. We also have the administrative staff of the Chief, myself, and the Fire Inspector for full-time staff, as well as our administrative assistant. So with that shift of six, we do go down to a minimum of four. So historically, we do not backfill people who are out on vacation, people who are out on sick leave or personal leave, until the shift would fall to three, and we replace at four. So as the Town Manager pointed out, that in the next few months, we're going to be moving to a community-wide dispatch or civilian dispatch system, and we have a firefighter that is going to be coming off of the dispatch and moving to the floor. Essentially, what's going to happen with that is the frequency of times where we are at four will put us in a position where the station will go empty. So if we have two ambulance calls, if we have a fire call and an ambulance call, or any derivative of that, the station will empty out, and the supervisor, shift supervisor could very well be on an ambulance call on his way to Worcester. So any calls handled by that would be based on standard operating procedure through dispatch, and that's something that we would like to avoid if we can. So in the last year, we've seen an increase of 15% in our call volume. We had 489 more calls in 2019 than we did in 2018. 109 ambulance calls were lost to other communities, our surrounding mutual aid communities. Every one of those calls is dollars lost. We're also facing a lack of emergency recall capability, and this is where I kind of go back to the span of my career. When I started 21 years ago, we were mandated to live in the community. That has since been bargained out. At this point, there are 10 career firefighters living in the Town of Southbridge, and I am one of them. So at this point, you have a few people that would be working on the duty shift from the town, and then you have probably about six people that are left in, in the community to respond for recall. When everyone lived in town, the response time back to the station was three and a half minutes. Our average response time now, including the people that live out of the community, is now over 24 minutes. So we do not have the recall capability to quickly backfill open slots, and this is why we're looking to increase staffing again this year. So we're looking to add one position to each shift or four new employees. This would be funded for seven members on each shift, and moving us to 28 firefighters on the floor or 31 full-time employees. What's the cost? I'm sorry, that's a little small for some to read, but the first year, the community would be responsible for 25% of the total cost, essentially paying for one firefighter and getting three paid for by the federal government, and that comes to $80,576. The next year, again, is 25%. You see an increase there, and that's because the allowable costs do not account for step increases or contractual raises. The third year, the town portion goes to 65%, and the federal government is paying 35%. And in year four, we assume full cost. What this allows for is for the town to ease into four new salaried positions for the Fire Department, increasing the staffing, making it safer for the firefighters on the, on the floor, as well as citizens in the community. So what's required at this point is to apply for this grant, to submit the application, we need a letter from the Town Council supporting the fact that the town understands the obligations and financial concerns that go along with supporting the grant, and that's what we're asking for tonight.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Counselor Lazo.
Yeah, um, thank you for your presentation. Offhand, would you have what we spend in overtime as we are staffed today?
We're budgeted for $150,000.
Mister Town Manager, you had a response to that? Did you have a question?
Just a comment. I want to wait for Counselor to be finished.
So, we have $150,000 budgeted for overtime. So if, it's safe to say, voting for the SAFER grant, would that bring that, the overtime number down? Would that help?
It should, yes.
Thank you. Hold up.
Could I just follow up on that question? Could you elaborate also on the, the potential dollars lost by calls that we lose that have to go to mutual aid communities or transfers that we cannot accommodate because of the staffing levels that we have? Because that would be the other question.
Absolutely. So we generally account for, with those 109 calls, we account for about $1,000 a call. We know that we're not going to capture 100% of those calls. We're being very cautious in saying that we're going to capture about 50% of that, so roughly $50,000 of potential revenue there.
Mister Manager?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, and I want to make some comments on this, this issue. When this issue came up this year, we put it in for last year, I wanted to raise some concerns and just have some discussion about this, because it is a long-term, significant impact on the community, as we all realize. First, I want to say, like, like everybody else, I support the concept of adding more firemen to the department. Obviously, public safety is a huge issue, and according to federal and state requirements, we should have more manpower than we currently do. I think we all recognize that. But I do want to recognize the significant issue of cost with this, right? So we had talked about, and you gave the fact, that 25% in the first year is the town's obligation of $80,576. That doesn't concern me a real lot. The second year, $99,504. Where I get concerned, and not concerned because I, I think that this is a good program, and I've really said to councilors, "I'm going to put it in. If you guys want me to put in the first year of budget, if this is what you want to do, be happy to support it," and it's something the council has to make a policy decision on. But the third year cost is a 65%. It's going to, added to our budget, it's going to be $241,206. Now, that's getting significant, because in that third year, you're going to have that money, plus whatever additional cost the town might have, and employment contracts and other issues. So that $241,000 is going to be a significant impact. And then even more so in the fourth year, when we go up to $369,060, right? So, so those numbers are going to have an impact to taxpayers and an impact on other items that potentially could be in those budgets three or four years out, which we're really not even sure what will be yet, right? So there's a lot of, a lot of things that I frankly would love to support. I, like many councilors, would love to put more money in for roads, more money to fix our town buildings and infrastructure issues. And again, I, I don't have any problem with the support of this. I just wanted to highlight that from a fiscal perspective, this is something we have to give serious thought to, the impact on the community as it relates to the budget. This is a policy decision, and it's a, you know, I think it's easy to make a policy decision on behalf of public safety. I just point out that public safety is not the only impact in town. There's a lot of other things going on. So I, I got to, I understand the difficult decision that has to be made on this issue, and, and whatever it is, I think the council will be looking at what's in the best interest of the town, but it is a, it is a difficult fiscal choice being made here. It's not easy tonight, just people understand that.
Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, through you. So I support this grant, and I believe that we just keep putting off because we can't, we can't, we can't, we can't afford it, we can't afford this, we can't afford that. And so, you know, I mean, that's what got us in this mess. So we have two years to pay in 25%, if we get, if we even get the grant. Two years to pay in 25%. Year three, we pay 65, and then, I mean, year three, yeah, 65, and then year four, we pay 100%. We have four years to budget for this and incorporate it in, into the budget and plan for it. The Fire Department has four years to plan for it. I mean, what don't they need desperately? I mean, we could just, we can do this. I mean, just by going down the list of the actual needs and the, you know, the things that can wait and stuff. There are ways around this, and we can incorporate this in the budget. If there's a plan, it can be done, I believe. Our community is, it grows, and it's only going to get bigger. And when it grows, you, you incorporate more problems. We have a high opioid problem in our town, overdoses. We have, you know, we have a high rate of domestic violence. We have, we have a high rate of crime, you know? I mean, and that's a sad fact about Southbridge. I mean, we have a lot of good things going for Southbridge, too. Let's keep those good things going, like keeping a fully-staffed Fire Department, fully-staffed Police Department, fully-staffed DPW. And if we, you know, yeah, we've got to make some tough decisions at budget time, but if we know that this is coming, we, we can plan for this. I mean, not at the last minute either, so that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Counselor Lazo.
I think the Town Manager brings up a valid point. It's always number crunching, but as the previous speaker, the Counselor, said, "We can do this." And I think if you take both discussions, I'm not disagreeing with either one of you. It's going to be a balancing act of what your priority is. I'm not going to peg roads against public safety. I'm going to cut waste out of this town government and try and put it into roads. I think budgetarily, I think public safety is very important. When you call that 911 and you want that ambulance, and you don't get it, what's the price tag? price tag? You got a broken road, now you fix your front end. Little different visual about what the priority is. So for myself, I'm willing to vote for this tonight, and I think I'm voting for it on numbers and on budgetary items that I think there are some areas in this town. I mean, I could pick one right off the top of my head, look at how many vehicles we have in Southbridge by town employees. We have electric cars, we have a charge station. Now, it all happened before I got on here, but I really believe that if we prioritize, when I bring up an overtime account, if you are shorthanded, you're bringing in men at a higher rate, and then all of a sudden, and then God, you know, the man that taught me this was Lenny Port, if you're going to spend your money on overtime, hire a man to offset the overtime. That's why I asked the question. So when I look at the $150,000, I know for a fact that $150,000, you have more men. You're not going to, the call-in is going to be different. When it turns around, you talk about an ambulance. It's a profitable service. It's not like going to fight a fire and you come back and you didn't send anybody a bill, so to speak. So for myself, I feel comfortable voting for the Safer Grant, and I'm going to agree with the Town Manager that when the time comes, we're going to have to deal with that. But again, counselors, don't forget today. If you're not on the council, I understand you probably won't, but if you're on the council, today is history. You're making history today by voting the Safer Grant. Don't let it slip your mind three years from now that you made this commitment, that we have to find a way to get the money, as the manager said. So I'm willing, I'm up for it, and I think we can do this, and it's good for the town of Southbridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. A couple of questions. Theoretically, overtime is supposed to decrease, hopefully when we add to our shifts, correct?
Correct.
Wouldn't that be the same as theoretically ambulance calls, missed ambulance calls would go down as well if you had more on a shift?
We should, yes.
So I looked at the numbers last few days, because last year, when I came on to the council, I think it was three firefighters per shift in some cases, and one of those being on the dispatch. So they weren't mobile at all. So I'm looking at your numbers now. Last year, or beginning of the fiscal year, July and August, when it came to six personnel on a shift, you were pretty much at zero. Even the third month within the fiscal year, you're about 10 to 15% with six. But I've seen, and now I've noticed slowly with your numbers on your bi-weekly reports, you're about, I believe it's 32% of the time, you're at about six personnel on a shift, which is a great thing because that's the intent of it.
Yes.
So with all these theories, and hopefully these theories actually come through in the next couple of years, we should see a change. We should see a shift going down in overtime. We should see ambulance calls being taken from our town, for our town, on a regular basis compared to losing 109 last calendar year. Do you know the estimate right now for 2020, last first two months?
For the, we believe we're in the 20 range so far.
Okay, all right. So I'm in support of this. Obviously, public safety is number one, is key, especially with what the counselors have mentioned. At the end of the third year, say we go on to the fourth year, is the town obligated to go into that fourth year to pay 100% of it?
No, they're obligated to fund it for the three years. In the performance of the grant, the fourth year, they are not obligated to continue.
Could you reapply the third year?
You can reapply, but it's not to continue that. It would be for additional personnel.
Okay, all right. So we have three years to kind of take a look at the numbers. Obviously, public safety is key, but we can look at the numbers for the next two, three years. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel. Counsel Daniel? Or you want Counsel Stevens? Counsel Dan?
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. It's very enlightening. I also support the grant. Because of my background, I'm a little bit aware of some of the medical aspects of this. There's a, for the people at home, there's a golden hour that paramedics are looking at in terms of beginning coverage on an individual who becomes ill in a sudden sense. And it's telling that 109 times or twice a week, you're taking a chance that there's going to be a delay in that response to begin the medical coverage within that golden hour. Frequently, a patient will delay in calling because they think there's nothing to it, or they're not sure they want to call, or perhaps they're frightened. That delay in calling cuts into the golden hour. Then it takes the time to call dispatch. Dispatch has to formulate a plan of response, and if there's a mutual aid response, you need to call or radio the local fire department, and depending upon what side of town you live in, it could be Sturbridge, it could be Choult, and it could be Dudley. And we all know how far the Dudley station is. So again, there's a delay in the response. So twice a week, right now, we're taking a chance on eating into that golden hour by upwards of 20 or 30 minutes before we can begin treating the patient. I think that this is money well spent. I think the taxpayers appreciate the work, the fine work that our public safety departments do. I think that the fire department in particular needs to be backed up for this particular issue, just because we want to have, at least I want to have, good treatment in town, good medical care for our citizens. I think we deserve the finest. I think putting it off, kicking the can down the road, does nothing for our taxpayers. So I support this, and I'm very happy to support it. Thank you.
Counsel Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions. First off, I wanted to ask if you mentioned just a couple of seconds ago, Mr. Hewlick, that the obligation ends at year three. Is, are there any other grants out there that can help fund staffing, even not necessarily 100%, but partial?
Not for staffing of firefighters, and each year, this grant has been cut from, and they anticipate more cuts from it coming in the future.
That figures. Because I was, because also I wanted to tie into the fact that what Counselor Manis said a little while ago about being able to fund things. If we do this, I think we can also see about getting other grants to do other things in town. I know I've brought this up a few times. To do other things in town that can free up some money to do some of these, some of the crucial things. I'd support this last year, I'll support it again this year. One question I did have for you, Joe, is that earlier you mentioned that you expect to see around 50 grand in annual revenue increases from ambulance calls. I was curious, how much, what percentage do we currently write off as uncollectible?
I would have to look into that and get you that answer.
Because I know the number's relatively high, but I don't know, I don't remember what it was offhand, so.
You have another question?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Counsel Marketti?
As I said at the subcommittee level, I also support this. I think it's a good plan, looks like a pretty good deal the first three years. The fourth year, it's something we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it. I wouldn't want to use the overtime as a point of discussion. Overtime, you probably, probably doesn't cost as much with overtime, because with overtime, you don't have to pay certain insurances, workers' comp, things like that. So overtime is just straight salary. But I would like to get the firemen. I don't believe overtime is a good reason here, but it's still, I would like to see that the firemen not have to work a lot of overtime. I do support it, Counsel Lazo, I do support it. But I would say it might be a good idea to, you know, not give out $166,000 building wave, fee waves, waivers. That would help pay for this, too. So as we did at the last town council meeting, I'd like to see everybody chip in and help pay for these things and not just the residents, but I do support it, so thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lazo, you have?
Heard it correctly, you said it was straight time. It's time and a half overtime.
That's true.
So what you're paying out, when you take a regular salary fireman and you put him on, and then all of a sudden, you're filling these shifts, you're not calling somebody in to cover that shift, all of a sudden, you see a sway. That was always a budgetary question 30 years ago. You know, if you're spending overtime all over the place, then why not just hire a person? It lowers your overtime. So it is going to be factored in along with the grant and various other things. One of the other points that I didn't bring up, but I'm going to bring it up now, is the great job that they're doing on an outreach for the call men. Remember, he just got done telling you that when everybody lived in town, that the response time was three minutes, 10 minutes, whatever it is. So for me, when you turn around and you put a Safer Grant in, that's a little portion of solving a problem. Then you have an outreach and try and get people involved in being firefighters and trained, and if you can hire locals, you're going to turn around and that number's going to go down further. So when you manage your community, you hire a local, and you put your money in, and you cut back on your overtime, all of a sudden, the accounting number looks a lot easier to swallow during budget time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just respond?
Okay, we're not going to open a debate.
Just quickly, I'm not disagreeing with Counsel Lazo. All I'm saying is that overtime is actually, in the long run, probably cheaper than hiring for a new fireman. However, I am in favor of doing this, so thank you.
Counsel Marketti, I just echo that point. I mean, you are correct. I mean, if you wanted to look at it, you said, but is overtime good for the employee when you're using overtime when guys are out so much and the stress of the job that they do themselves?
I agree.
So the plan B is, if, say the grant doesn't go through, we still have to address an issue with staffing at the fire department and either address minimum staffing where we are committing a dollar figure for overtime, so they're at a certain minimum. So, I mean, this is just one solution. I'll have some more comments, but I'll, did you have a response to Counsel Steves' question? Or, Counsel Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. From the time of submission to the time this grant is actually rewarded or denied?
That's a tough, tough question to answer because last year, it was many months.
Okay.
They had government shutdowns, things like that, all can play a role in it. So we're hoping to hear by summer, and we would look to put the positions on in January.
Excellent, thank you. Great presentation. I also do, will be supporting this this evening. I believe we'll find the money in the budget to support the first three years, and we'll have to reevaluate year four going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just have a few comments. First off, I fully support this. I was a strong advocate of it last year. I just want to make some comments as to the changes that have happened in the fire service in the community. So Counsel Lazo says that the department, the two chiefs have done a great job in rebuilding the call department that was pretty much devastated or decimated under the, before we came on council a couple of years ago. So we worked really hard over the last two years to rebuild the call department, rebuild and make sure that you're staffed at the levels that you have. But you look back to the years when the town had call volunteers of 40, 40 call men, maybe when Deputy Chief Hewlick started, it may have been 40 call men. The standards to be a call firefighter now is tremendous commitment. The days of just walking into a fire station when I started 20 years ago, that said, here's a pager, here's your coat, here's your boots, and you're a firefighter. Now it's, make sure, you have to go to the call vol training, which is a commitment to get volunteers to do that. And we're not the only town that is suffering with lack of volunteers. It's commendable that we were able to get and rebuild that program because it is such a commitment. Then we take a look at the nature of the fire service itself in our EMS system, and I'm sure maybe the chief is going to respond to this as well. Harrington Hospital used to be a full-service hospital for the community. So it was great, the ambulance loaded, dropped off at Harrington, 15-minute turnaround, here's your run report, here you go, pass it off, we're back in service. Those days have now changed where it's a lot more documentation, number one, and a lot of transports don't even go to Harrington anymore. They're direct amidst to Worcester because of the type of call it could be. OB-GYN doesn't go to Harrington unless it's really emergent, I would say. A heart attack, if the paramedic on scene determines that it's a, what they term a STEMI patient, direct to Harrington, direct to UMass, so they're not even going to Harrington. So for our ambulances to leave Southbridge and go to UMass or one of the Worcester hospitals, it's probably around a two-hour turnaround. So that rig is out of service, and if we're down to five firefighters with one on the desk right now, that leaves the ambulance out of town, one on the desk, two maybe on a second ambulance call, and then you have all these callbacks. I just, I'm a firm believer that if we work this program to, one, the overtime, two, the, you know, the ability to respond to a multiple of calls, also what it does to our firefighters and our EMTs, our personnel, that if anyone was to listen to a scanner and the amount of calls that our fire department does on a daily basis, sometime 14 to 24 calls on a day sometimes, that's an incredible amount for the number of firefighter EMTs, paramedics that we have on staff. We have a staff, and I said this last year, we have a staff of 24 firefighter EMTs on the floor. We're looking to put four through this grant. Last year during this time, period when we brought this grant later in the year, the town of Shrewsbury was advocating for additional firefighters for their department. They had a big media blitz on Channel 25. The chief was there stating that they had 38 firefighters for the town of Shrewsbury, and they don't handle EMS calls. 38 firefighters, and they were looking for eight additional firefighters through the Safer Grants, through the same grant. And when they stated how many calls they serviced, 4,000 calls for the town of Shrewsbury. Our Southbridge Fire Department with 24 firefighter EMTs did approximately 4,000 calls, a little under 4,000, calls last year with 24. I don't know, I commend every single firefighter, the chief, all the way down, for the amount of work that they do. I don't know how you do it and stay sane. So I fully support this. The manpower is, the term manpower, I don't want to be, take any offense, but the personnel is duly needed, and I fully support this. So Chief, did you have something you want to follow up?
Thank you very much, you stole my thunder. That's exactly where I was going to go. The world of Southbridge Fire and any EMS or fire department service has changed very much in the last 20 years, we'll say. We've been kind of stuck in a 20-year rut here. Definitely what the chairman has said, echoes exactly what I was going to say, to talk about Mr. Daniels' comments in regards to the golden hour. We are diagnosing and treating people every day with our paramedics here in Southbridge. We have a top-notch paramedic service. Everything is quality assured after the set and done. Our paramedics are delivering patients having massive heart attacks and strokes to St. Vincent's and UMass Hospital in Worcester directly. And I was going to go on and say in regards to that is that the turnaround time for us getting our ambulances back in Southbridge is two hours. So that's where we, our total operation is different than it was just 15 or 20 years ago. So I appreciate everybody listening to our spiel. Deputy obviously put a lot of work into the presentation. I hope that you guys all can vote for this, and we'll move forward if it doesn't go through. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Appreciate the presentation has been set up here. Great information, great work as always. The need has been there for a long time. We all realize the steps that have been taken, that's wonderful. Where I'm having my questions, I think that perhaps years three and fours already has been alluded to. We're not just coming out and saying it, but of course, we have some daunting hurdles to overcome when it comes to trash and recycling in that timeframe, when it comes to roads projects, if anything ever gets off the ground with a new fire station. So I just want it said that, at least for myself, I'm cognizant of the implications of going forward with this. But we've been kicking the can down the road for longer than I've been living in this town. So I do support this, I stand behind it, I appreciate the good work that the men and women in our public safety groups do. I realize this is impactful in the next couple of years, and I also realize that the impact is a positive one with staffing improvements, and it's something that we need to be able to swallow with our tax rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't know if something's going on in the side room there. So any further discussion? I appreciate Counsel Nash's comments about kicking the can down the road. Safer Grants, like the chief alluded to, I know in the upcoming budget, federal budget, because I follow this stuff as well on regular, as part of my career and stuff, that the president has cut this program as well. So, I mean, it's a very competitive program. I think we were very competitive last year. Chief, if you want to just allude to what the feedback was from last year and...
From the FEMA reps, David Parr in Boston, when I spoke with him in regards to the outcome from last year, he really was at a loss and did not have a good answer as to why we didn't get one. He said he was very disappointed. He was very happy with the product that we put together and did not understand why we weren't awarded.
And he encouraged us to reapply.
Absolutely.
And I think the comment was, why aren't you asking for more?
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? So, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, well, present.
Thank you for your support.
So, we'll get the letter drafted as soon as you get the application, so we have time. Okay. Thank you. Agenda item 12, Town Manager Goals and Objectives FY 2020 Update. What I did is I put this on the agenda because I know there had been some emails going from the town manager to other councilors. I, Council Manna had brought up at one of our subcommittee meetings about the use of citizens forum or, not citizens forum so much, but councils forum or new business and the like. Well, I think councils forum would fall under that advisory that you put forward. So, given the fact that I'm sure that councilors may have had a question as to specific questions that they may pose to the town manager during councils forum, I put this as an agenda item so that if anybody has any questions as to, I know Council Manna has probably a question, if anybody else has questions as to status of certain goals that the town manager has, this would be an opportunity to ask those questions at this time. So, Council Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So, yes, I did get an email from the town manager and, in regards to the landfill methane energy program. And what I got was not what I asked for. I asked him to do his research, just find out how much it would cost to see, you know, to see if we could, if this would be doable. I mean, because it's, our landfill is a target landfill for the landfill methane energy program. It's about 20 to 30 years that methane can be used. There's other communities in other states that use the landfill methane energy program. I'm going to use South Carolina. If you're in South, if you ever go down South Carolina, you're going into Georgia, there's a Volkswagen plant and that Volkswagen plant bought like 30 miles of pipeline just to tap into the landfill out there so they could use that green energy to supply their manufacturing plant. Anyways, we do have a small, um, I don't know what it's called, we, a converter there that Casella had put in and we were getting and I believe we still are getting a little bit of revenue from that for the town, but we can be getting more. And, you know, just to come back to me and say it's too expensive, it's only going to last about 15 years is unacceptable. I'm sorry. It just doesn't cut it. Do your homework. Get in touch with the federal agencies out there, the EPA. Get in touch with your local state representative, the governor, anybody, congressman. I mean, look, just don't go ask Tyon Bond and Andy Pelletier if it is doable. Do your homework, get the information that I asked for. That's what I want. That's what I'm looking for. And it's not debatable. I'm sorry, this isn't debatable. I did not get what I was looking for and I, I think you're doing the town a disservice by not doing your homework on this.
So, I'm going to allow, if the town manager wants to respond to the question itself, I know there was other councils that had questions on the methane gas proposal. So, as, update on that if you could.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we've been researching that issue and I appreciate the information that Council Manna sent me. I was asked about the utilization of using methane gas. Essentially what it does is utilizing methane, methane gas by burning it to a generation process or generator process. It basically puts electricity into the grid and then you sell that electricity and the town gets a percentage of the funds from electricity. We've been doing that for a number of years. The generator's in place and as she pointed out to me, she actually sent me a bunch of information about all the benefits of that. In other words, the reducing of the methane gas, the environmental benefits, a whole list of benefits. I actually went through and read what she had put forward and frankly, that's what we're doing. The only real question I think is left is can it be expanded? Is there value in expanding and adding another generator? And currently, we are looking to see what the cost of that generator is. The initial comments we got back from Tyon Bond and frankly, myself or Andy are not experts as to the generators and the cost and the value of the return of the methane gas. So, we've been reaching out both to Tyon Bond and to Sandboard Head or Casella Organization because Casella actually put this in place and they did it for one reason. They wanted to make revenue from this. So, they're utilizing that methane gas to make revenue now. We get a percentage of that revenue. The question of is there added value of adding a second generation is, a second generator is the, really the issue. It seems to be at hand. Tyon Bond's initial conversation was that they didn't believe the value of that was worthwhile because as you burn off the methane gas, it decreases from the landfill and over the next 15 years, it keeps going down. Adding a generator is new cost and if it's only going to be good for a certain period of time, the question is your return on investment and the value of that. We had some initial look at that, but we have to do more homework on that, more study on that. Andy and Anna are both working with Tyon Bond and Sandboard Head to get more information as to the logic of that generator. There's also truthfully some legal issues because as you know, the town council many years ago gave Casella the right to do the electricity generation and sell off that methane gas. So, it could result in some legal questions that frankly, we're not going to go down that road until we even see if it makes sense. So, I appreciate your comments. We are continuing to look in for it. The response we gave you was sort of the initial response, but Andy has asked me to give him more time for him and Anna to have those meetings and to get more information about the actual cost of a generator. Council Adams happened to ask me what the revenue stream was and I didn't bring it tonight. I don't know if he has it, but it's a significant revenue stream that we get from the sale of that. And when I say significant, it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars, but it's not nothing either.
So, what I received, Mr. Chair, from me, what I received was, it was over the last six years, is $132,000, I believe it was, top of my head.
Council Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. And I know I said this wasn't debatable and I'm not debating anything. I just want to make it known that, Mr. Town Manager, you didn't even know we had a contract with Casella for this, for this energy program to bring our town revenue. And it's just a small percentage and that was the requirement for them putting in that generator for, for, when they did that. So, it's just a small percentage and if over six years, we've gotten $130,000 in revenue, can you imagine what the bigger generators would bring us to our community? I'm certain. And you have to look for investors if they want, if they want to invest in something like that. You have to be out there looking. You have to be out there selling that industrial park too because we could be, we could be, we could be electrifying the, you know, selling energy to the park, the industrial park. I mean, just a, probably about seven or eight years ago, the town council, I remember they did a tour of the Fall River landfill industrial park and at the end of their industrial park was a landfill and they tapped into that energy and they were, they were energizing, I don't want to keep saying energizing, but they were selling energy to, they were supplying the energy to those buildings out there in that industrial park. I was in the town council then. I remember Council Logan was. Do you remember what I'm talking about, Counselor Steve's? You were a reporter.
I was on the council at the time, but I was...
You were a reporter. Yeah, he was a reporter. So, and you need to reach out to the other communities in, in Massachusetts that do this too. What I got with that, with that email was basically this goal and objective is completed. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Lazo?
I'm not looking for a debate. I just would like to call, my comment was, did anybody ever go and see one of these generation plants that were saddled to a landfill? No question about it. It sounds great as far as revenue source, but I would rather go before I would spend a dollar on an engineer, is to go see one of these communities. I'd be willing to, to drive and get the van and go out there and look at it. I mean, if it's a revenue source, I mean, we've got this mountain up there that if it can produce dollars, I'm interested. And then when you talk about three years from now and you got to take over those three salaries for that firefighter, all of a sudden those, you gotta, you gotta think that way. And, and again, don't give those millionaires big refunds that work in Southbridge, but we have to think that way. I commend Council Manna, but again, I'm not well-versed on this, but I would love to go take a ride to any community that has one and just look into it further as far as the revenue source. Is it worth it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Council McKenna?
Well, there's a lot of, lot of little nuggets in that whole thing there, but I, first of all, I don't see how methane is green energy. It's, sounds like an oxymoron to me. I think there was a plan to put solar panels up there. I thought that was a pretty good idea. I'd rather see something like that than methane gas to energy. I think, I was reading in the weekly report that we do have a methane system up there and they are collecting energy for that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you want to respond?
Just one quick comment. Right now, you're right. If you look at throughout the state and throughout other states, solar projects are huge in landfills right now. So, Andy is actually the inspector is looking at and working with the company on the issue of, of solar. And in, as I say, that's pretty abundant through Massachusetts and I, I guess I would to some extent agree with you that that is a really good course to look at long-term and he's already started that.
Do you have a question on the methane gas only, this goal and objective? That's all we're talking about tonight?
Specifically, this...
Okay, thank you.
Landfills, that's technically not methane gas. That's landfill gas. One of the constituents of landfill gas is methane, but we have hydrogen sulfide as well. And one of the reasons I'd caution us to invest in the equipment because it's extremely caustic on ferrous metals. And I believe a lot of companies are, like if you look at the exact same generator and let's say generator one, you're using methane, generator two, you're using landfill gas, you're going to get a very different warranty from the manufacturer. One thing that is to the positive, there are communities that in another part of the world that sell their landfill gas where it's taken away. Maybe we could get a company interested in buying our landfill gas and removing the hydrogen sulfide and using it as they wish. There are places that use it for heat, for example. I wouldn't want to put in any town furnace because it could cause damage to the furnace. Often it's sort of greenwashing where it looks neat, but we do have, although Casella was very good at reducing the high hydrogen sulfide levels, we still have a high hydrogen sulfide landfill gas and it's not as simple as it seems. All landfill gas is not the same. That's all I was going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, man. Did you state your name and address, by the way?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could you just state your name and address? I know we probably have it.
John Plowski, 3 Genescent Street, Southbridge.
Thank you, Joe. Just for the record, that's all. I just want to make sure I'm formal. I don't want any bad grades coming my way. I'm sure I'll get a report card by somebody. Council Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So, you know, yes, landfill methane gas is clean energy. It even fuels cars. We did, back in the day, I'll say about 10 years ago, maybe 11 years ago, before I was on council, when I first started getting involved in the community, when the landfill was a big deal, bigger than it is now, we had people come out and talk about the landfill methane energy programs. We had our state representative get us information from the federal government, the EPA, and they, they did quite a nice presentation. I don't have the materials with us, with me, but there's many communities throughout our country that use the landfill methane and they produce energy with it. It's just, you're burning money into the air. It's safe. So, another thing, when I was doing all that research a few years ago, I found an article through CNN and I thought I sent it out to Chris Clark and I think I've sent it out to a couple of other people over the years too. And it was an interesting article on countries that are recycling so much that they don't have garbage to produce that energy, that methane. So, they actually import garbage so they can produce that energy. Germany is one of those countries. Switzerland is one of those countries. It, I, I believe it is a good revenue source. Council Lazo, you stated that you want to go and Fall River was the one I believe that they went to. There was the industrial park and right at the end was the, was the landfill and they are using the methane to supply the energy to the buildings out there. So, we need to know what the percentage is. It's a very small percentage that we bring in now for the revenue, for, for the, the system right now. And yes, Casella, they, they're the ones that, they, hey, they paid for it and everything and they put it in there, but we contracted with, there's a contract with them that said, yeah, you're going to do it, but you're going to give us this much money of it. So, it is doable. You know, sometimes you have to invest money and there's, there's money out there to, probably to help with this. You just got to look. You got to take the time. You, you need to look. So, that's all. Thank you.
Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I guess it can be debatable how clean that actually is because I've read different reports, but the only thing that I asked from the town manager once he was sent this, sent this to us via email was cost analysis. So, I understand if it's too expensive, it's too expensive, but at the same time, I mean, we ought to know the numbers and I think that's my point at that and I think I conveyed that pretty well last few days. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on any pending goals and objectives? Council Adams?
So, I did ask the town manager an update on infrastructure and asset management, numbers one, two, and three, which is the, one is the Jacobs Consult, um, report and also provide analysis on the school facilities maintenance plan and also number three, which is provide council immediate priority list of roads, sidewalks, according to pavement management plan. So, I did receive a response back, but I just see where it's at at this point in time since it is, it was due back in January. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you and thank you, Counselor Adams. It is completed, it is done and you'll have it first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
What specifically is completed?
The response to the goals and objectives for all three of those. It's my response to those goals and objectives.
Well, it's, it's a public meeting. Could you elaborate?
Well, yeah, well, all right, let's put, I'll have it in front of me, but I'll give you, yeah, what I know.
So, here, Mr. Manager, here's the deal. So, let me, let me finish. You're going to send an email. It's a violation of open meeting law for us to then send you emails back to ask you questions and, you know, so these were due January 15th and that's why I'm trying to eliminate any potential open meeting law violations by people circulating emails saying, Council Manna, that's not what I wanted, Council Adams, that's not what I wanted and it's going to all councilors. So, these were due, I mentioned it back in January 12th, that this stuff was due January 15th. We're now at March 1st. So, just quick, you know, is there analysis of what was part of the goals? That's a yes or a no answer, I guess, or what the status of it is.
So, the answer is yes. It's in my analysis of those three items. The answer, just, just to be clear that when I send these out to you first thing in the morning, you can respond directly to me, just don't CC any other members. So, I can answer questions as it relates to these goals and objectives with individual members. What we can't do is deliberate them as a body. So, you can't, if you don't copy other, other members with any questions you might have. I can, I don't have it in front of me, but I'll give you a little bit of the information. As you know, the facilities management plan is not completed yet. One of the issues was as it relates to priority roads and priority in sidewalks as it relates to the, the time, the new pavement management plan. So, tomorrow you're going to get a list of sidewalks that are on the agenda to be done in this coming season. You'll also be receiving some pri, some discussion about the roads. Heather has used the existing pavement management plan and her knowledge of the roads to develop a priority list of roads. You will see them in the budget document. We will be talking about those with you. The DPW director has put together some options for you guys to consider at different funding levels for particular roads. So, you're going to see her recommendations as to which road she thinks are the, the most important. This is actually a result of a lot of discussions they have with the chairman about utilizing some funding from the, if you remember when we first put the original $100,000 in, in from town roads, using the leftover money for that, which is about 95 grand. An additional 100 grand is what we're trying to implement in this year's budget to continue our program of building up 100 grand at a time. And we're also looking to use an additional $200,000 of money from another source for roadwork. So, Heather has put together various options for this town council to consider, will be considered at, at budget time. I think it, I would hope and I think that council... I think it, I would hope and I think that council will be pleased that we're trying to take an as aggressive as possible response to trying to do more roads in town. So I think that will be good. And frankly, it's not going to be any big surprise because the DP director has on a number of occasions talked about specific roads with, with different sub-communities of town council. The facility management plan, or let's bounce back, the facility management plan, I've had an opportunity to review the facilities management plan, and we're specifically talking about the school system one. I've had an opportunity to review that plan, met with the school receiver about that plan, and we talked about various options. One of the things, I was going to talk to the chairman, the school receiver would like to set up a meeting with either the town council or at least the chair and vice chair to discuss various options as to what needs to be done with the schools. There are significant capital items that need to be done, for instance roofs are going to be due soon to replace a number of roofs. The question he raised to me was, you know, we have to have, or they have to have, a plan as to what are the long-term educational needs of the community and how does that tie in directly to the facilities? In other words, do we need to have the same number of elementary schools? Should we consolidate? What is the long-term educational needs? And we don't want to go out and, for instance, one of the things we talked about is replace all the roofs if you're not going to utilize the building. So, we really both believe that there has to be a very serious discussion with town council and the receiver to discuss how we're going to go about determining those school needs and what we're going to do with the facilities, which ones are needed, which ones may, should be rehabilitated, which ones should we put roofs on. A lot of discussions because we are going, we would like to use, the Massachusetts School Building Authority has a program for doing roofs and windows. We are responsible, we've had a lot of discussion about that. We are responsible for providing the money for the design work and the engineering work for that, and then we can apply for grants to replace the roofs and windows. But we have to decide how we're going to move forward on that item. There's a host of facility needs that I think the school system has not tackled for a lot of years, that they're going to really come to the forefront of our agenda for that issue as well. So that's going to be, I think, that's going to be a serious discussion between the two groups of people. Quickly on the Jacobs study, which is the consolidation of the town facility staff and the school staff. We've had, I've had numerous discussions with the school receiver on that. I think he's come to the conclusion that he doesn't want to consolidate the two departments, that you're going to have, again, you're going to have the full report about that tomorrow, but the, that doesn't mean that there's not components of that report that are still important to potentially implement and to look at. For instance, one of the things that was considered was a computer software program that did work orders, if you remember. Just because you don't consolidate departments doesn't mean you shouldn't go forward with some of those kind of recommendations. So, you'll get the information tomorrow, but I think it's going to be, a lot of those things are going to, some of those things are going to be debated in the budget and some of the things are going to be long-term conversations between the boards, but we have to start that process.
Counsel Manna, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to make one last comment on my wish to see more information on the landfill methane energy. It is, it is expensive to do. That's, there's no doubt in my mind. But if we just say it's too expensive, we don't have the money and don't look for the money, I mean, then we're not doing us a service or the town a service. That happened when we were looking at the money for the dispatch. There's no money, that's the answer we got, there's no money for it. Did you look? There's nothing out there, there's nothing out there. And Senator Fattman had $100,000 for us. So there is money out there, you just go look. And that's all I want to say, thank you.
Mr. Smick, you have something? Question?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. First of all, I'm sorry, Dave Smick, 145 Ridge Road. When you look at capital assets of the town, they're not divided by, oh, here's the school assets, here's the town assets. They're all town assets. Capital plan should be a whole-town plan. The receiver's got his hands full with education in this town. Shouldn't be bothered with anything, and I don't even see where he has any authority on anything regarding buildings. The charter even states, Mr. Manager, that you are in charge of maintenance of those school, of all town buildings. And through that definition, that includes the school. Now, as you know, there was an engineering report done last year on the capital needs of the school department. I think in total, I think it was around 54 million is what was stated in that program. But I just want to repeat that I said a year ago. It's even more important that you have a good, accurate, six-year capital plan, and it has to include the school buildings. The town, it's town property. We own it, let's take care of it. But you got to plan for it. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, and I agree with you. So what I'm talking about is, you may remember, a number of years back when I first came here, I had a facility management study done for the town side. So there's a separate study that was done for town-owned buildings. Recently, last year, we had a facility management plan developed for the school side to look at their capital repairs. You are correct, this year, the six-year capital plan that we're developing has both all ensembled into one. So it's just exactly as you described. The reason I was talking about them in separate units is because the specific goal and objective that was given to me was to look at the facilities management plan for the school system and give a kind of my analysis to it. So in order to do that, I had to meet with the receiver and have those discussions. But I agree, and that's exactly what we structured for this year's process.
Great, thank you.
Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just one more point. I talked to the receiver Thursday, I believe it was, and one thing that he said he wishes we can actually have a discussion about these studies. And so I think, I'm looking forward to actually having a discussion. Since that one study, Jacobs, I believe, was over two years ago. So I would love to have that discussion through EHS or probably DPW, or whoever, whoever it may be, but love to have the discussion, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a response?
Yeah, if I could just briefly. So, so thank you, Counselor Adams, and that's, actually it came as I think a result somewhat of a discussion I had with the receiver. The facilities management plan, be they on the town side or the school side, they are not engineering reports. They are an oversight of looking at the facility needs as it relates to, okay, this, this particular thing, the roof, for instance, has a 30-year life and we're on year 26 and we have to look at it. But it was never designed, either one is an engineering report. The receiver, in my conversation about that report, the facilities management report for the school system, started discussing with me, well, what are the educational needs of the system? And how do we determine what the long-term educational needs of the facility? In other words, what buildings do we need for the next 20 or 30 years? Do we need all of our elementary schools? Should we consolidate, should we ever? And that facilities management report doesn't cover any of that, right? So now you have to look at, that's what I was trying to say before, you have to look at the educational needs and how does that tie into the facility needs? And, you know, I was saying to him, is that something you could provide? And he's like, no, I don't, I can't provide all that myself either. I don't have the capacity to do that. So that's why part of the discussion that we're going to have, and you're going to see my report tomorrow, is, is, I said, well, how do you get that information? How, you know, who determines that? And he was talking about something called a master plan that schools do all throughout the state, where they have companies come in, they evaluate all of it. They evaluate what the school needs are, they tie it into the, to the facility needs, and then they decide, okay, does it make sense to put a roof on this building or not? You know? And it's all tied into this master plan. Truthfully, I haven't seen one of those master plans yet, maybe the former members of the school committee have seen them, but it's an expensive process. And, you know, he's telling me potentially a couple-
We did it ourselves.
Yeah, it's an expensive process. So that's something that we need to have the conversation about. You know, that, that facilities management plan is sort of a high-level look at stuff, but it's not the detail we need. How do we take the next step now and looking at those and build that master plan so that we can actually start figuring out exactly what we need? And what ties to all of that, which is a huge discussion, is what are the costs of all of that? And how do we figure out the long-term? Because most of that's borrowing costs, these are such big projects we're going to have to borrow for. So that, that is all part of the discussion that's going down, and really what the receiver wants to do is include you in that discussion.
Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First of all, I look forward to reading the town manager's responses to the particular goals and objectives that are in question or being discussed here. But beyond that, I'd like to ask through you, Mr. Chairman, since you brought up early in the meeting, that the receiver has emailed each of us personally with copy to the chairman, doesn't sound so personal to me now, about individual meetings. That to me is not time well spent when these particular matters, in particular combining school facilities and DPW department staffing, is a matter that really should have come before the council long before now. He was invited upon his arrival to Southbridge, if I recall correctly. He wasn't prepared and I can completely understand that, but without a formal conversation with the public body and giving us the chance to discuss it openly up here, I feel a little bit slighted. And I'll let my, my emotions go away because I have nothing but respect for the job that he has to do. But end of the day, to sit up here and hear that he isn't inclined to do it without a formal conversation with the council, the complete council instead of these individual meetings, is, it's actually a little embarrassing to me.
So I think you mischaracterized the intent of his meetings. The intent of his meetings is not to talk about these issues. He talks individually with councilors on that, and that's why we have a meeting scheduled with him to talk about the overall district himself. Those individual meetings would just have an opportunity to, hey, this is where we're at, look at some, some cursory things.
Thank you, I'm combining my points and I'm not intending to mischaracterize anything. There's a lot on my mind, having sat here and listened to what the town manager has said. I'm not interested in hearing that the school receiver wants to meet with just the chair and the vice chair on some of these issues. They need to be brought to the full council. We've waited two years to have some of these conversations based on facilities management studies, Jacobs report, and others. And then I also am one that has remained supportive of the school receiver. But at this stage, when we're not seeing the school receiver show up to the school committee meetings and answer to the public bodies, it's time to start doing those things. I'm glad he's coming. I'd like the questions asked next week. I'm not going to send you an email, Mr. Chairman. These are things that should be brought up while he's here. I don't care if it's a four-hour meeting.
Well, certainly, that is understandable. My point earlier was, if you have a specific issue that you would like him to address, that he may have to provide data for and not give us, I'll get back to you, that's the intent of that. Okay? As far as an individual meeting with the chair and the vice chair, I meet monthly and I don't make any bones about the meeting that I have monthly with the receiver. Everybody on this council knows that I have a meeting with him. I've invited every single council to attend that meeting with me. The conversations that I've had with the receiver regarding the overall development of what builds to use, certainly that was communicated to him. I have no idea what the conversation was with the town manager, but the conversations that I had with the receiver has been, let's come to the council if we have to form a committee to study the school buildings, as we did with Counsel Lazo's leadership back in the day. We studied every single school building as to what grade configurations we were having. We did a demographic study, those were the conversations that I've had. And I've, and the town, and the receiver is very aware that this is a conversation to have with the entire council. To the Jacobs report, I don't know how many times I have asked the town manager, we need an analysis of this because we keep kicking the can down the road. And it was simply an analysis of, here's the report, okay? It says, the recommendation was combine this, these departments. Okay, that's great. The analysis that I expect is, how much is it going to cost? Is there impact bargaining issues that we have to address? Is it cost-effective? Right? Regardless of whether the receiver wants to do it or not, it still should be vetted by this council because it was a report commissioned by the manager two years ago that was due January 15th. I look forward to that. This agenda item was posted Thursday. I would have liked to have all that information this morning so we could have had a reverse discussion about some of the concepts of it. We'll put it on next week's agenda. If it's a four-hour meeting, it's a four-hour meeting.
Thank you for that. And my comments and points were entirely directed toward the goal and objective and toward the receiver and not toward you, so I appreciate your candor on the matter. My pointed remarks are directed at the town manager and receiver based on the town manager's statements about the receiver's comments back to him, so I hope you take it that way.
I do, I just want to make it clear for the public and the council-
Right.
-that the receiver has never had a conversation where he wants to just address the chair or the vice chair.
Right.
He wants to work with the entire council. I mean, that has been made very clear. So I want to make very clear, because there are individuals that are on the other board out there that believe that they just cater to certain individuals, and that's not the case.
Haven't seen them.
Okay? So, and he'll, he'll be here, and that's why we're pushing for a meeting with the commissioner as well. Because the commissioner should come here and stand before us and explain what the status is going to be for the town going forward. Mr. Manager?
So, Counsel Nash, I want to be clear too, because I thought I said it clearly, but obviously not so clearly. I said that the receiver wanted to meet with the chair and vice chairman, was really just to establish a process to meet with the council. And I said that he wanted to meet with the chair and vice chair and also the council. But, but usually the first step is when we set the time of a meeting, how we're going to organize it, we usually do work with the chair to set up that organizational structure. But, but he is comfortable with talking with you guys about any issue. This is, in my opinion, a gentleman who is very transparent and would be happy to have the discussion, I think, and that includes what he thinks of the Jacob, the Jacobs study as well. So I wanted to be very clear, I wasn't implying that he only wanted to meet with them, that was not my intention as I spoke. He's definitely open to discussing with everybody.
Counsel Lazo?
Where do I start? A question would you ask the receiver? I only have one, when you leaving? We've already seen what they're doing? Pretty close, I think they're outspending the council side. It's between us and them who can spend the most, but I'm sitting, I think he's winning. There's no dismount in the foreseeable future. I'd like to see the commissioner in. I'd be respectful to speak to the man in charge. The receiver's not in charge of what the final outcome is for Southbridge. The commissioner is. The receiver is a foot soldier for the commission that is here to straighten out our schools and get them back on track, as they said. Data, data, data. Now the data shows that the MCAS scores are not where they should be, and a lot of stuff is going backwards instead of forward. So my question is, when does the state design a dismount? And when does that happen? So once we can get rid of the big black eye that they gave us when they took us over for no reason, that's my personal opinion, then we can work towards marketing Southbridge again with good schools. Until then, good luck. Buildings and maintenance, frustrating point for me. Consolidations, frustrating. We performed the Kennedy Shaw study, which still sits in the clerk's office, which said, consolidate the maintenance department, consolidate the business manager's position with the town finance director, consolidate some of the DPW in building maintenance. There was a lot of ideas on the same track as we're working. Cost-effective. I'm not a fan of consolidating or having a building maintenance department all as one as a town. I don't think you should touch something that's not broke on school side. They do it correctly. We tried to do it here, on town side. I wasn't a counselor, but they started on the hem o'clock. To no avail, it doesn't happen. Then they say, this study, another study we did, the Jacobs study. At the police station is a air handler and air conditioner that should be replaced.
That's a different study. Not the Jacobs study.
No, I thought that was the Jacobs study.
That's the facilities study. We do a lot of studies.
I'm sorry, that's what I'm dying with, facility study. Thank you, Mr. Jovan. So, when an HVAC guy comes in and said, love to sell you a new one, but you don't need one, that was the biggest waste of money that you could have ever spent. You can call an HVAC company to come in and give you a free analysis, or they will replace it when it breaks, like normal people do in their house. They don't replace it unless it needs to be replaced. The word comes out, all the roofs are bad. Mr. Jovan and I kind of choked up on that one, because I know that when we did the demolition and reconstruction of the old Southbridge High School, we re-roofed a lot of the high school in preparation for the future use of the building. But we have Mike Como, who knows more about these buildings, school buildings, than anybody. He's had a five-year capital improvement plan for at least 30 years, as long as he's been there. Nobody goes right to the source. Can have another study, another engineer. You know what it takes to put a roof on a building? Not an engineer. I don't hire an engineer to put a roof on any of my jobs. You go to a roofing company, you ask them, can you please observe, tell me what's wrong with this roof? I have a leak. I have a leak. They go up there. They say your life expectancy of your roof is done. This is how much it will cost to repair it, and you repair your roof. If it's a full replacement, they'll quote it, and they won't charge you a dollar. Mr. Smick got up. He's three days old and in dirt when it comes to government. Good friend of mine, we are the landlords, the school, the tenants. Remember that statement. Because when it comes down to the money, we are responsible to providing safe buildings for our schools. At some point, if they stop using a building, they turn it back over to landlord, and we take care of the problem, sell it. Wells will be housing. The old Southbridge High School had a great idea for a charter school, just to create competition in town. It'll be good, they can play for the high school. Just that idea, and the receiver will just kind of cackle at it. They're going to take out $15,000 a student, which is one of the highest student expenditures per pupil. We can talk and talk and talk. Mr. Manager, with all due respect, these are the talking points we're going to use. We're going to be talking about it. Sorry, guys, I'm all done talking. I wasn't going to say anything about these subjects, but it is study after study, talk after talk, and we are the council. Heather's going to come tell us what roads are important. No, we're going to tell Heather what roads are important. It's our job. We ride on these roads. Just drive on them. You can make the analysis. You don't even have to do a study. When your front end falls off, fix that one. That's real simple, gang. We have a DPW director, we have a DPW engineer, and we're still talking. I hope, Mr. Manager, during this budget, that we do attack these things. I'll be behind you 100%. But if you think I'm going to go to budget and talk about when we're going to fix something, we already know where the damage is, we already know what we should be doing. Our schools are almost down to 1,900 students. They need less space now than ever before, less staff now than ever before, and the budget number is the highest it's ever been. Somebody's got to do the math. We will work on that. But we need to get focused on spending efficiently and not just throw money into these things thinking we're doing a good thing, and we are doing a good thing. And that good thing, and that good thing, when you hang up, when you add up all the good things, you're broke, and you got to go to that taxpayer, and you got to hit them again, in the water rate, in the sewer rate, and everything else. So for me, when one of the councils bought up methane gas and a new source of revenue, when Mr. Adams talks about the 3% on the marijuana dispensaries, new revenue stores, that's what I want to hear. Be conservative on spending and go after the revenue. That's how you make your community back the way it was, where there's a balance, not an imbalance. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. One other point. Mr. Chairman, to your credit, I know that you've invited people to those meetings. Would you like to sit down with the receiver? I chose not to. He's not going to tell anything, tell me anything that I haven't already heard from parents, teachers, and administrators. I hear the truth on the ground, and then I get the window dressing at the meeting. I've been in politics too long. Don't BS to BS artists. Thank you.
Councilor McKee?
Well, I would just like to say that, you know, Councilor Lazo says he's through talking. I'd hate to see what would happen if he started talking. But I thought we were on goals and objectives.
Well, there was some interjection about the buildings and stuff on the goals and objectives. Do you have any questions on the goals and objectives?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. And the reason why it was on this agenda, it was an update because these items are outstanding for a period of time, and it's, to the point of some councils, enough talking and what are the solutions? And if we're in budget season, that's why we needed, we're pushing for the analysis of these reports that have been outstanding for so long, so that we could make, i.e., you know, town manager is advocating for a facilities manager. Well, until we vet that report and have an analysis of that report, how do we make a decision, a budgetary decision, on that issue? So that's why we push this items through, to get things done, and it should be done in public, because we are a public body, and it is a public discussion as to the status of these items. And, you know, and it's not to, you know, make anyone look bad up here, it's just, we have a job to do, we're accountable to the voters to push things through. We, as a council, worked very hard to come up with reasonable goals and objectives and timelines that were fair, that were agreed upon with individuals to move it forward. And if we don't demand results and demand updates, then we're not doing our job that we're elected to do. So that's my point. Anything further on this? Seeing none? Agenda item 13, I want to entertain a motion to take no action as this issue has been resolved.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of taking no action? And just for the public, it was a possibility of amended in the grant components for the FY 2020 Community Development Grant application, which we had approved several weeks ago. There's a possible issue with a section in town that they might not have allowed, but they've allowed that. So, Councilor Adams, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
Just to caveat off that, Mr. Chair, the HUD came down, audited DHCD. DHCD turned around and started critiquing the requests that were for these CPG funds or these applications, and one of the items that they weren't sure about was the water main on West Street. They came back last Thursday, the state did, and said, hey, it's good to go, and that's why we're withdrawing the agenda. Thanks.
So we didn't have to take any action on amendments or anything, so that's why it's tabled. So, thank you. Item 14, review and approve the following items regarding the town manager's search. So just for us, a review of the proposed schedule of activities for the town manager's search. I will have a formal list of those dates, but I thank Vice Chairman Daniel for working with me on this matter. As you know, the town manager's contract will expire in six months, so we're at the six-month list, date. So to that, we kind of worked with, looking for the request for proposals for a search firm to assist with the town manager recruitment, which is in the packet for, hopefully you will have the review and approve that. So the goal, or my goal as chair, is to, next week, have the appointment of the town manager's search committee, those individuals at the town council to be voted on. Those individuals, that's a chairman appointment, per the charter, with confirmation by the council. The requests for proposals will be going out, hopefully if they're approved tonight, will be available tomorrow. We also have several search firms that we've found that do searches in the Commonwealth, Massachusetts. That list is available, and we would send those out to those individuals, it'll also be posted on the MMA site for people to apply. We would ask that these requests for proposals for a search consultant, as you're aware, we allocated $20,000 to that search. Looking back at what the prior costs of some of the firms that we did, the last one was about $14,000. Actually, I believe they used two different firms for the last search, because I found two different contracts, because there was a, the first search came out, and then when that came through, there was a possibility of changing government to a Board of Selectmen, so they pulled back on that search and started again. So they actually did two different search firms for requests for proposals during that period of time. So these proposals will be due on, on or about March 19th. Then we'll go to the search committee for review, interview the firms, make a recommendation for the council to approve the contract. Goal would be that the job would be posted the month of May, interviews in June, and that, my goal, strong, fast goal, is that the appointment of the town manager would be completed by June 30th, so that this sitting council makes that appointment. So with that, is there any questions on the timeline itself? Or the request for proposal? Do you have a question on the request for proposal? Because then I'll entertain a motion, because there's a separate item for that. Do you have a question on the proposal itself?
Yeah, well, the date. So does that go with the timeline? I don't know.
For the request for proposal?
Yeah. So March 19th, 2020.
Yep.
Okay, so because this was supposed to be on the 24th, we're a week behind.
We still can do it. I looked up, the town of Harwich only posted this for 10 days for requests for proposals to come back.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we had enough time.
Yep. And actually, what we did is, because the date had to go on in the MMA posting, we just put out a posting to say, we will be putting out an RFP for this, it'll be available, so that we could get it in the beacon for this month.
Oh, okay.
So I took that upon myself to make that decision, that, with anticipation that we would have some kind of request for proposal, that they would be able to find that. So, do you have a question on the RFP itself? Because I'll entertain a motion for, so if there's no question on the, that's the general timeline, I'll have a more formal one.
I have a question on the, well, it's related to your general timeline and the RFP directive.
Okay, what's that?
Yeah, the fact that under the term of the contract at the end of the RFP, it specifically says, it shall be completed on or before September 1st, and you just said June 30th.
Well, because we would want the town manager, the new town manager to start by September 1st.
Why would we need them to have the?
Because they would still be part of the search all the way through, background checks and all that, and make sure that we seat somebody, so that's just the completion of the contract itself. Not specifically the date. The date for the appointment of the town manager would be no later than June 30th, with an anticipated start date of September 1st. Contract ends August 21st. I would think that we'd have, we could use the act and town manager for two weeks and have a September 1st. So if we made the decision on June 30th, that would essentially be July 1. Most individuals have to give 60 days notice. That would be a September 1 start date.
I just don't know why we would need the contractor to be involved in that last two months.
I think it's just, just in case the party doesn't take the job, we have to restart or anything like that. It's just a contingency to do that.
Okay.
And that was typical of the contracts that we reviewed. We took a look at different towns, our requests for proposals when we did this. Mr. Smick, you have a question?
Dave Smick, 145 Ridge Road. Under agenda item 14 is broken down into A, B, C. Are those three separate votes, or you doing all as one vote?
No, a separate vote.
Okay, so we're on what, A?
Well, A was just the review of the proposed schedule of activities. So next, I was going to entertain a motion to discuss the request for proposal.
Okay, because I do have comments about all three.
Okay.
Can I just get it over with?
Yep, that's fine. That's fine.
Your first one, A, review the proposed?
Not unless you're going to file a complaint that I did something wrong, because I'd like to follow charter as closely as I can, Mr. Smick.
We're going to talk about that in the item B.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Item A, review the proposed schedule of activities for the town manager's search.
Yep.
The council appoints a planning board. Do you do this? Do you schedule their activities? No. Let the search committee do its job. What's going to be important, and the only one that's valid out of A, B, and C, is C, your charge. You can establish everything under your charge to the search committee. They know their marching orders, it's their job to deliver. You know, so when I see review of proposed schedule of activities scares me. You're trying to run every meeting they got.
My intent was, tonight is, my schedule activities, approve, request for proposal, approve the charge, because the town had no charge, right? Approve the date which this is due, and the only other date that's important to me from here is the town manager has to be appointed by June 29th. That's the list of activities.
Well, maybe you can take a new look at, a new look at it. Now, let me go to B for a second. Review and approve the posting of the request for proposal for the service of a search consultant to assist in recruitment of the town manager. Now, if you look at the charter, now, has this been the subcommittee?
It has not.
I don't know why it hasn't. I think we all know and understand that the subcommittee is the work, is the backbone and workhorse of council, where you can discuss the stuff and air it out. Okay.
Deployment of a search committee is solely the decision of the chair, however, subject to confirmation of the council.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Now, if you go to the charter on, under 412, it's only two paragraphs that talk about town manager's search committee. Second paragraph, let me read that to you. The committee may, committee, that's the town, the search committee, in its discretion, engage a professional search firm, and the council shall appropriate sufficient funds to allow the committee to engage such firm. You're not engaging, council's not engaging. It's the search committee. That's what the charter says. Let them do their work, like I said on item.
So, Mr. Smick, my intent is to allow the search committee to do their work, like you said. The charter says they may engage the services of a search consultant firm. However, this council needs to approve any contract for services that is awarded. Correct? That's charter. Any contract for services.
Mr. Chairman, don't play games with the charter, because I'm going to tell you, you're going to lose.
Well, I think it's been very clearly established throughout.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, let him finish speaking, and then we'll move on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Councilor Lazo. Thank you. Go ahead. I'm not going to entertain a debate with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, again, I've been on a town manager's search committee. I know what the consultant brings, and it's a lot of valuable advice to the search committee. Let them do their job. Don't hold their hand. You can pretty much dictate the things that you're looking, dates, you know, do you want to see the top, does council want to interview the top three or the top five? When do you want the, what date do you want their recommendation by? I know the charter doesn't say it anymore, but there used to be a resident, a resident requirement by the town manager. Now, if someone, a potential new town manager, is going to have to relocate, I think it would be fair for the council, if they feel the new town manager should be local and relocate locally, you can stake that in your charge to the search committee. But again, under your direction, under the charge to the search committee, you can cover all your items. These other things, and, you know, if you want to argue about who's going, whose idea is a search firm, if, let's say, the search committee said, we don't need a search firm, end of discussion. Again, let them make the decision, let them do their work. You want to get specific, do it under the charge. And I think it would have been nice to have this kind of discussion, let's say, at your subcommittee level, where you can air this stuff out instead of doing it on TV. And that's the only reason why I asked. Now.
We have about one more minute, Mr. Smick. Unless the council would like to extend time.
It won't, it won't take a minute. So, you know, again, let them do their work. You know, it is going to be a tall order. You know, you look at our last town manager's search committee, took them forever. You know, in general, people can question whether they did a good job or not, but again, hopefully, and whoever you're appointing, you know, I wish them good luck, and I hope that they do a good job. But let them do the good job. Don't stand over them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Steve?
I'm thinking, Mr. Chairman, just to address a couple of points that Mr. Smick raised.
Can't hear you.
Can't you even hear me? Even though those mics are better, huh? One of the points I just want to point out that this, over, this request for proposal specifically states is the order of this contract, if any, will be made no later than 30 days after the deadline. So it is up to the, it is up to the search committee to determine whether they want to, whether they want to actually do this or not. However, I think it makes sense. However, I think it makes sense as a council to set the ball in motion, and if the search committee decides, decides not to use it, that's fine. The other money is there for other things as well, and we'll certainly need to do some of those other things, regardless of whether this is a search committee involved or not.
Thank you, Counsel Steve, and that was exactly my intent, was to start the ball rolling. To say, we allocated money, so it really was the intent of the council to allow money for a possible search consultant. This wasn't getting this, there was no intent for the interviews to be held by this, the town council for this search consultant. It was simply at, we're at the six-month mark, we appoint the search committee. We have an RFP out there that search consultants can submit proposals to the town hall that will then go to the search committee to be vetted out. That search committee certainly can say, under that charge, you can have it, or you don't have to have it. So, uh, that was purely up to them. At the end of the day, their recommendation, just like anything else, has to come to the council for us to award the contract, because it is a contract for services. That would be the only thing that the council would have to have any say about voting on. We know different than what we did with the feasibility study for the fire station building committee or any other committee that we did. So that was the intent behind this, certainly not to micromanage the search committee. My intent is not even to be, or to not have myself even involved in it as chairman, that this is purely the search committee's job and charge to conduct a fair, comprehensive search for the best individual to be the town manager and report back to the council. And the only goal that I have is that we appoint somebody by this sitting council. That's only fair to the councils that are here right now, that we get the appointment done by June twenty-ninth. Now, if the search committee says they can't do it and have to report back to us, that's a decision we'll make as a council, but that's the only illusions of time that I have. Counsel Alazo?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, the charter is what it is. I, I feel what you're doing is your job, as far as the chairman of the council, you're the liaison, you're the appointing authority of that, that board. I sat as chairman of a search when we picked Florence Chandler. And the one thing that was detailed, and I think you're doing this, is the dates. You have to set the dates for the Beacon. The Beacon only comes out certain times. You have to get your dates. We have a manager that is going to be in August gone. I turn around and I look at this, I think that you're doing your job as a chairman. You're not doing the, the, the search committee's job. But the thing is, with all the experience that you have in government, on school side, town side, and everything else you've put in, in your lifetime, being an advisor or helping that committee, because you do have people on that committee, it's going to be the first time. So they're going to need, what about this, what about that? Don't ever shirk your duties as the chairman of the council.
I will never shirk my responsibility.
Thank you. Because no matter what anybody says, no matter what anybody rehearses, you want a smooth, swift search, and you do whatever it takes to make that happen within the bounds of the charter. I did not, but I was under the old charter. I did not take my search committee to subcommittee. I appointed it, we went to work, and I chaired it, and I was the chairman of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Marquetti?
I'd have to agree with Mr. Schmick. According to the charter, it is discretionary to appoint, to hire a search firm, but it is recommended. I would like to point out, though, that the three non-council members, and I don't know when you're going to appoint them, but according to the charter, it's recommended that they have some experience in hiring upper-level management, so I don't know when you're going to appoint them, but I just would like you to keep that in mind, please.
I kept it all in mind, Counsel Marquetti. And again, I stated very firmly that the discretion about hiring a search consultant is purely the search committee's decision to make. However, when they have their first meeting or so, or second meeting, they will have proposals in hand that say, these three, four, two firms have the ability to conduct a search. Here it is. Folks, here's your marching orders. The marching orders are, you will conduct a search, the council appropriated money, we've given you search firms that have responded to a proposal, because let me tell you this. That search committee is going to sit there and spend a month trying to figure out how to do the request for proposal, to get it out another month, in two months, and delay if they so decide that they want to hire a search firm. All this information is there for them. Here's the proposals, yes, no, do we want to interview them? Even if you interview them, does not mean you have to hire them. It's just a simple two that this committee will have at their, their disposal. Counsel Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So, at the last search committee, we did have two because of the referendum, and then we, we had to, like, dissolve everything, and then there was another search. Both search committees utilized an outside source to help them in that process, because they realize it's a task in itself. I think any professional that you appoint to that committee will understand that. There's going to be two councils appointed to that committee as well, I believe two, right, two, yes? And it's open to the public, and you, as a town councillor, have the right to be in there and make recommendations, and hopefully, you know, you'll be heard, and, you know, they'll, they'll, you know, listen to your recommendations. Sometimes they don't, sometimes they do, depends on who you have on there. And I respect the fact, Mr. Chair, that you are taking yourself out of that and not appointing yourself to that, because I feel that just gives, and nothing against you, and I, I hope the vice chair is not appointed either, but that's at your discretion. It just gives the appearance that, oh, you got the chair and the vice chair. Well, you know, that control thing and stuff, I don't know. That, it gives that type of appearance. I know from me as a councillor, back in two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and fourteen, when all this stuff was going on, when the vice chair of the council was appointed the chairman of that committee, I didn't think that was a good thing, just because of the title itself. And they, you know, I, I think, but that's at your discretion, but I really appreciate the fact that you're going to take yourself out of that. Thank you.
Counsel Steve, did you have some?
Yeah, I did have a quick comment. It's just that with the whole search firm thing, I think it, it makes more sense for us to be doing that, because I think logically, the first thing the search firm ought to be doing is figuring out fairly quickly what we want to have, what they want to see in a town manager. That's their job, is to come up with that stuff, with, with consult, consultation for the community and us and, you know, other boards and commissions and things like that, what we need in that, in that office, as opposed to this bureaucratic nonsense.
Counsel Alazo?
If anybody, when it comes down to a search, the best thing is to hire a search firm, because not only do they do a lot of the legwork, I, the thing that you have to understand, and no one's mentioning here, is they have a list of people, they're like headhunters. They do this all over the place, in Massachusetts, wherever, and they have people that fit in puzzles in certain communities. So, I think it's, it broadens the base by having a search firm. I know it showed, I mean, Mr. Joe Venkin commented this on school, we went for Dale Hanley. You know, every time we did something, it was, you know, knowing where everybody was and who was looking and who was qualified. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. First, entertain a motion to review and approve the posting of the request for proposal for the services of a search consultant to assist in the recruitment of a town manager. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, discussion on that, agenda item. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call?
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Alazo?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
Item C, review and approve the committee charge for the town manager's search committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second discussion? So, with this, the town of Southbridge had no committee charge, so, you know, you always look out there and you say, hey, is there something out there that, that you can use? It's purely up to the council whether we want to use this or not. It was just my idea, it would be good to be able to as chair, once that committee is established, that you just go in and you say, hey, this is what your charge is, and go do it. And then when the search is completed, your recommendation is going to be three to five. I'm open to, if, if people have suggestions for any changes, we could bring this back up next week, if there's anything additionally to change, but it was, I went by, I very clearly what the home rule charter says as to who's appointed to this, and just went off some of the things and incorporated some of the information that's relative to the town of Southbridge. So, is there any discussion on it? Any changes that you see? Counsel Steve?
Yeah, just one point. Actually, under C seven?
Yep.
Counsel Manna pointed it out, that's a good point. To conduct interviews of the recommended candidates in executive session, that's just up to, up to sub, it's like, what is it, semifinalist?
Semifinalist, yes.
Just to clarify.
Can we put that in there?
Because by law, by law, beyond that can't be, so.
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, Counsel. I said it's under C seven.
C seven.
By law, anything beyond semifinalist has to be in public, so, just, just we're clarifying that C seven should include up to semifinalist status.
Okay. So, just add at the end, up to semifinalist?
Yeah.
Okay. Because that is the, the law, so.
And we're, here, here we're clearly saying on number nine, that's to recommend the council three finalists. I have no problem, I would say three to five. I mean, we might be better, depending on the field, from what I understand, just talking to some of the other town managers, the field is a little weak right now, but we never know, maybe we'll find some really good ones. And also, maybe it might not be a bad idea to see if we would consider doing something about having somebody who would step in as kind of a, a, what's the word, I guess, an assistant manager, with the intention of training into the full manager slot. I don't know how that would work.
I think, our, our intent is to hire a town manager.
I know that, but I'm just trying to throw, throw some ideas out there, so we get more, a better field, maybe.
So what is the intent of the council? They want three or five finalists? I'm open to whatever you want them to recommend to us. And I think that's your point, Counsel Smith. Three to five, I mean.
Three's fine.
Three is fine, I think. You want the three best. If there isn't three best out there,
I agree with that.
Then we'll be reposting and having somebody else here, so. Counsel Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Under C, number eight, to review background information and references as appropriate. Unless you're a human resources director and know the laws in human resources and getting those, I think it should be specified in here. I don't think that should be the, I think the committee should bring it to our human resources director.
No, no.
No?
No.
No.
No, because that's all executive session material. So that would be them reviewing whatever references came in.
Oh, okay.
Whatever background information.
I thought it was calling for references. That's how I took that. Okay.
No. And most of the time, if you have the search consultant, they have a lot of the references, they've already done a lot of that as well.
So I misread that, so, okay.
But that's just for them to review that information.
You know, I mean, in the past, I've heard
Yep.
other people, they just call and they try to get references, and that's illegal to do, you just can't do that, so. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Steve?
Just want to kind of follow up on that a bit, is that I think one of the things that we as a council as a whole should be doing once we get our finalists, is that we need to make sure that we don't vote on the same day we do interviews, and that we have, have some time to actually go visit the communities that they come from and actually talk to people. Because at that point, it's all open and it's public, and we should go and be doing a little of our own homework as well.
I agree. I mean, I didn't want to peg down the timeline, but the, the, the final recommendation would be that we would want to be able to vote on, on whoever the candidates are on the, on that, by the thirtieth. But whatever during that week, if we have the interviews during that week, we've done that with school committee when we did superintendent searches. We did, we did whoever was on the search committee, or, I mean, no, I think that, no, school committee. School committee, we appointed three, three to go out, so that wasn't a quorum and, a group, and to report back to the council on such visits. So that would probably, I would want to model it after that, because I think that was a, was good, because we did get a lot of valuable information, because it was interesting during that search. Somebody interviews very well.
Yes.
And the public looks at it and says, oh, wow, that was a great individual. And then when we went and spoke to the actual superintendent they worked for, it was like, we got the, yeah, what do you want to know about him? You know, so you get that different feel, so, yeah, so that would be the. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay. Roll call? Well, as, as amended with, I'll add that, up to the semifinalists. Yeah, Counsel Nash?
Was there any action taken on the number of finalists per Counsel Steve's recommendation?
I think everybody said three. That was, the consensus was, he said three to five, but.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
I think the consensus was three.
Thank you.
Counsel Adams said three. Everybody good with three. Mr. Schmick?
When we did our search committee years ago, we had applicants from all over the country. Some of them might be real good, but you might not even be able to even think about, let's say, visiting the community.
Right.
You know, so, depending how far this thing goes.
Right.
You know, and, but, the consultant can lead you in that direction. That, that's what he's for.
Because I think the town, the town manager that they hired in Sturbridge was actually in Alaska, and I think they did that interview over TV, teleconference.
But say, I think we brought somebody in from where, Minnesota?
Yeah, so, yeah, within reason. We're not going to pay to go to Minnesota or Alaska.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll do it when I go on vacation. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call?
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Alazo?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel's forum? Counsel Marquetti?
Uh, yeah, I would, I would like to talk about the situation on Morris Street. I, I do live up there, and I do see a lot of four-wheelers and, and and motorcycles, people flying up there to go up to, to that golf course. And I did talk to Mr. Warden over the weekend, and I was not aware that they were finding, that he, that he had found needles up there, but it doesn't surprise me, because other people in town have been on social media talking about finding needles in many of the parks in town. It's really unfortunate. I mean, I, I hate to see anybody get into that type of situation. But I do think that going forward, and maybe we should consider some kind of a, some kind of a task force, some kind of a committee to take a look at this. Get the police chief involved, get some counselors and the town manager involved, and sit down, and let's discuss this problem, because finding needles around park where little kids are playing is not a good idea, is not a good thing. And I think that, and I don't, I don't mean any disrespect, I just think that this, putting up the signs is not good enough. I think you really need to talk to kids, talk to the kids, find out, find out what kids are not doing drugs, and find out why they're not doing drugs, and that's what you should try to, to work on, and don't, if you do start a task force or a committee, you've started other committees, curbside committee, search committee. If you do start something like that, don't, don't be afraid to put people on that committee that maybe do know people around the community that are abusing drugs. But I just think it's a sad thing that, that we find needles in our parks and, and different areas of Southbridge, and I'd like to see us try and put something together where we can sit down and have a discussion on it. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I will caveat off what Counsel Marquetti said, at least on the Morris Street part and that little golf course. I do, I did contact the chief the other day. I know last year they did a sting operation up there and found, I believe, one individual had a warrant out for his arrest, and, and then a lot of unregistered vehicles as well. I talked to him, the chief, the other day, because there were some issues at the old tag, they're flying up and down the street. He has posted some police officers here, there, where needed. I, I know they've caught a few as they went along, but summer is coming around, and I'm sure it's going to be a problem again along Morris and, and up through that old golf course. So, if there's residents out there watching this, please contact us, or the town manager's office, or the police chief, and let them know that it's happening in their area. I want to thank the DPW for putting up the solar lights that the Veterans Council of this town donated to the town. They look great up there in the Rotary, the Honor Roll, and the World War One Monument. Not a lot of people. Not a lot of people walk right by that area, so it's kind of hard to tell. But I want to thank them for that, and tomorrow get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Catrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Counsel Lazo?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to commend that citizen that got up tonight and brought the needles to the council. There's nothing better than a hands-on presentation, and that's what he did. I just hope, through the chair, I know that you sit with the chief and the manager, and make something happen about that neighborhood and the needle thing. Society's changed. Normally, someone would be complaining 30 years ago about beer cans on there, on the golf course. Now, society's changed with opioids. We have an issue. But I, I really just want to take a moment to commend that citizen. It takes a lot to get up in front of the council and say, look what I brought you. Nothing hits you better as a council than something like that. So we should make that a priority first thing tomorrow morning. I would like to thank the cable TV committee. These new microphones, great job. I can even hear Marquetti from here. It's unbelievable. I almost poked my eye out when I first got up, and I turned to my councillor and said, this thing's a lot longer than it used to be. But we can hear each other now, and we can debate, and we can have healthy debate. Just for final, Mr. Chairman, there was a sighting of a mini excavator on the parking lot from hell. We are working on it. I can't believe it, I'm the happiest guy in town. They removed all the sidewalks, they're laying curbing. In a great compliment to that project, the lights were turned on, and I drove through there at night, it looks like a stadium. So when you say you're deterring crime through lighting, drive through the Central Street parking lot when it's dark out. I've never seen lighting as bright as Central Street parking lot. Outstanding job. So on positives, things are happening down there. I'm optimistic we're going to hit the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just a quick friendly reminder that we're missing members of the Cable Advisory Committee. I'm reminded by Counselor Lazo's remarks, so it would be great to see some people step up and offer themselves to work in those capacities. So with that, I also just want to take a quick moment. We love to make sure that we give thanks and appreciation to different departments, and police and fire are always right there at the top of our list, and they deserve it. I don't, I don't deny that whatsoever. I want to just take a moment and say thank you to Yvonne, Kim, and Cheryl for all the work that they do. They all participate in helping get the agendas together. They do research, they find minutes, they file minutes, they get them down to the town clerk's office. They answer my stupid calls seven times on some particular occasion. I'm grateful for the support that we get out of that office, and through the town manager, I'd ask that you pass my gratitude along. I don't want to take away from anybody, but especially the last couple of weeks, I've had plenty of reasons to call in there and ask for support, and I always get it. And I get it expeditiously. They don't ask for gratitude, they don't ask for or expect any sort of recognition. But for the time I've been on council, I'm pleased with the service I've gotten out of there. With that, I want to make one last comment, and that is that I appreciate, too, that the council recognizes that we're giving direction to that fire department by our actions this evening to support applying for the SAFER grant, that we want to expand that fire department. There are a lot of things that go along hand in hand with that. It is a great direction for us to promote, advocate for, and try to preserve the integrity of our public safety system here in town. There are other things that I try to correlate alongside that, but I'll just remind folks that in the past, I have promulgated that a strategic plan that I've provided to others on occasion helps guide us and give us some direction, and it's a couple of pages that we can reference. Otherwise, I think it's great what we're doing, but what's the real end game for that and other actions we're taking? I hope that the next council considers that and will take some action to put something in writing. We don't have the advantage anymore of looking at an annual report. You know, we haven't had one since 2018. You know, it's in the charter. We, we don't always get to it. We don't ever publish enough. We don't make it a fancy document like every other community around us. So please, understand my vision, understand that we have great council members up here. I don't always agree with many of you, I'll admit it, but I certainly appreciate the good work that you do, and I am really grateful that we took the action on the SAFER grant tonight. And I apologize for the rambling, but there's just so much that I have optimism for in this community, and you folks up here are the ones driving it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Steves?
Thank you, Rick. Just a couple of quick points. First off, I just wanted to actually mention again, to kind of follow up on what Counsel Marquetti mentioned earlier. You know, I, I live on the other end of, of the trails that run all the way through that area. There's a bunch of trails in those woods, and I see those ATVs up on Lebanon Hill, I see them on, on Tipton Ark Road. There's bikers up there, and I mean, I mean motors, motor, motor bikers, not, not bicyclists. And it would be nice if, and I know that some of, a lot of that property is all, is all mostly private property, but, you know, it's, maybe we're, maybe bringing the people who own those properties together and sit down and talk to them and coordinate something to, to help both protect that land and get some of the idiots off of it. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was just the fact that, for those of you who are interested, the Historical Society has got a couple of events already set up for the spring. It's spring, spring schedule, March 11th, which is this couple, next week, on Wednesday. Doug Quigley will be talking about the Revolutionary War. The April program on April 8th is Dick Leacy talking about historical coins, and May 13th is Dick Whitney talking about the hurricane and flood of 55. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just, Mr., Counsel Adams mentioned to go vote tomorrow, yes. Tomorrow is Super Tuesday. It's for the primaries. It is important, it is important that you go and vote, primary or, you know, whatever, local election, any election. This is the 100th anniversary of our 19th Amendment, so I hope when I go out there at 7:00 tomorrow morning to cast my vote, that there's a line of women. You know, because, I mean, 100 years, that's not a long time. I mean, considering that we've been around for well over 200 years, right? So get out there and vote. When you do vote, not only in this election, but in, like, our local election, and then we'll have September, I think we're going to have an election, and then we'll have the election in November, do your homework. Do your homework on the candidate. Don't take it at first sight. What you see on social media is the truth, because more than likely, it's not the truth. If it sounds too good to be true, it probably is. If it sounds like the world's going to end tomorrow, it, it's probably not going to. So you got to find what's in that middle, and you got to make your decision that way. But it's really important that you get out there and exercise your right to vote. It's always been fought for. I mean, you know, years, it's, it's just been fought for. So just go vote. And you know what? If you say you got to work, well, it's law that work allows you a couple hours to go and vote. They can't, they can't discipline you because you're going to vote. It's, it's in the law. Also, garbage on Main Street. So a couple weeks ago, I had, I, I, I let the town manager know that somebody had just, like, their home garbage just, like, overflowing. And he got that taken care of, thank you very much. But I went by again this morning, and I see that there's somebody throwing their garbage in. It's the same place, corner of Main and Central Street. I mean, when you see, like, the garbage bags popping out of the can, you know, those garbage cans on Main Street are not meant for your home garbage. They are meant for our pedestrians or the people visiting the stores or something. So they're not throwing the trash on the street. You, your landlord, or if you're a homeowner, should be taking care of your own garbage, not the town. Town should be taking care of your garbage like that. It's, it's, it just becomes a mess. And, yeah, you can't complain about the weather either tomorrow for voting, it's supposed to be in the 60s, so, and it's going to be sunny, too. So go vote. That's it. Thank you.
Counsel Jan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I received recently a phone call from a constituent on South Street who's concerned about the raceway that is becoming the area down by Five Star Auto. The speed limit there is 25 miles an hour, and people are winding up as they approach the, the hill to go down the hill and up the other side going into the highway. So I'm asking my residents that live up in that area, up on Dennison Hill, or going up toward Brecknick, and use that road to, please be considerate of the residents that live in the area, and follow and obey the speed limit in that area. It's, the speed limit is set for the, for the good of the people and for our safety, and that's something that should be considered. I'd like to give thanks to Dick Whitney for a tour of the Optical Museum. It was very interesting to see just how many technological advances came out of Southbridge, technological firsts, many, many, many hundreds of patents involving not only the glasses and glass lenses, but optics in general. Also of note is a room that's set aside for a brief, a brief history of Southbridge. Of particular interest is the recording of WESO radio announcing the 55 flood as it happened. It's important to remember that this wasn't a flood where rivers rose gently and then over, overrode their crest.